I'd like to call to order this Town of Monument, Town Council Special Meeting for Friday, December 16th, 2022. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You take role, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Councilmember Shaining.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Ramos is noted absent.
Thank you. So before us, we have our, an agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove Discussion Item 3A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Elliott.
Okay, we have a couple people here with us tonight that-
Do you want to pass the agenda as modified?
Oh, yes. The agenda passes as modified, 5-0. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaining.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Lakine.
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0. Okay, we have a couple people attending with us tonight that are not normally here. We have the candidate for an attorney that we will hear from in a little bit, Mr. Grant Vanderjot. And we also have with us a parliamentarian, Gregory Carlson, and I'd like to just say a little bit about him. First of all, I'd like to appoint Gregory Carlson to serve as the parliamentarian for this meeting today. Gregory Carlson is a professional registered parliamentarian with the National Association of Parliamentarians, and he is one of approximately 350 people in the world who has attained this status. He also serves as the president of the Colorado Association of Parliamentarians. However, he appears today only in his personal capacity. He will act as an advisor and assist with matters of Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure and to assist with the conduct of this meeting so that correctly follows all applicable rules of procedure. Thank you, Gregory, for being here.
Mayor Pro Tem Elliott, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I just want to confirm the Town of Monument is not paying for this.
That is correct, Mr. Foreman.
All right, thank you.
Another-
Oh, no, I was just going to ask him if he could come keep order at my house during the holiday season.
Does Robert's Rules apply for your house?
They should.
Okay, a couple things that I'm going to go over here that essentially were a recommendation of Mr. Gregory Carlson. So these are just an outline, outlining some rules for decorum for this meeting. So this meeting that we're doing is a town council meeting that is going to include voting on an important issue, and we are here to discuss and vote on the issue, but all council members and members of the public should understand that this is a meeting that will follow the rules of parliamentary procedure. As a presiden officer, I would like to outline rules of discussion so that we may discuss the issues and conduct our votes in a way that honors both the town council and the public. Firstly, it is never appropriate to disparage a council member or a member of the public to call anyone a liar or to attack the personal character of another member in any way. Secondly, meeting participants may not shout out comments nor shout for recognition from their chair. We will ignore members who call for the question from their seat, shout out to be called on, or call anyone names. Thirdly, if a member wishes to seek recognition, they should raise their hand, which is typically what we're used to, for recognition and then come to the podium to speak. I can then recognize you to speak. Only one person shall speak at a time. These rules are the principles of Robert's Rules and parliamentary law so that members on both sides of the discussions can speak passionately about the issues at hand and so that our discussion can be respectful. Any members who violate these rules will forfeit their speaking opportunity and be ordered to resume their seat or escorted out if they continue to not follow the rules. But I am confident that all public participants in the board will abide by these rules, so let's proceed with the business at hand. Okay, before we read the resolution, I would just like to bring up one point because it seems to be there's some words buzzing around out there on the internet, and I would like to bring up the definition of conflict of interest from our charter, our Home Rule Charter. So, "No member of the town council shall vote on any question in which he or she has a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest occurs when a member of the town council has a substantial personal or financial interest in the outcome of the question, whether direct or indirect, or on any questions concerning his or own conduct. A conflict of interest does not include general personal interest in the outcome of the matter." So that's straight from our charter, number three in Section 2.10. All right, now the agenda. So we have before us Resolution 95-2022, a resolution to hire special attorney Grant Vanderjot for the investigation of concerns the council has identified related to the November 2022 election in two-way, and to fully execute Mr. Grant Vanderjot's letter of engagement. Thank you for being here. Would you like to say anything, or would you like the board to start with questions?
I'm happy to address the town council, and I'd like to make a few comments upfront, I think that may clarify some of the issues. I was approached with the task to investigate some issues. The issues have not been made entirely clear to me. I don't have an entire scope of what those issues might include, and I have heard that other folks have been talking about whether I would be here in the capacity of an attorney and whether I'd be here in the capacity of a investigator. And I want to be clear that a special investigator must be an attorney, and an attorney is an officer of the court.
Is your microphone on, sir? The green light will be on.
No, I don't believe it is.
Can you push the button? Oh, is it on? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, one of the pieces of confusion as being an attorney and being a special investigator is, who is my client? Right? If I'm hired today, if you approve this resolution, you are my employer. The Town of Monument is my employer, but my fiduciary obligation in this matter is to seek truth, okay? My allegiance is to truth. It is not to any particular character, and it is absolutely objective. It has no, who is involved is not going to affect my opinion at all. I have absolutely no qualms about finding a friend of mine in violation of a rule or somebody who I don't know in violation of a rule. My task is to identify if a rule was broken. So I, again, I don't know the full scope of what it is that I'm going to be tasked with. I do have limited amount of time. I do have a law firm outside of this. I do know several of you, both personally and professionally. I believe four of the councils, well, I'll just go through them. I know Darcy on Facebook. We've met in person. I have met Jim today in person. I've known Jim on Facebook before. We've had conversations before. Kelly, I've had conversations with, and I've met in person today. Ron Stevens, I've sent a friend request to on Facebook. He has not accepted yet. And Mr. Lakine was a friend of mine on Facebook until this morning. I don't know why, but we have been friends for over a year on Facebook. So I do know many people in town. I don't see, personally, I know that you raised the issue of conflict. I can't for the life of me imagine that any one of you or any member of Monument would have any substantial conflict of interest with me. I don't have currently any financial connections with the Town of Monument whatsoever, with the exception of clients who come from Monument, and none of the folks in this room, no one here is a current client. With that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, so, first off, we've never met, and I believe our friendship connection on Facebook was created out of some type of party affiliation. I don't remember how it went down. It's irrelevant, but as we talk about conflict of interest, it would appear that you've actually represented one of our board members. An email went out in the March timeframe of 2022 during the time that the caucus and assembly process was beginning in El Paso County, and I have a copy of the email that you sent to Ms. Shaining, and I'm not going to go into the details of it because I think they're, well, they were public at the time, but I'm not going to read the lengthy part of it. But I do believe that you have a conflict. According to your rules of the bar, rules 1.7, conflict of interest of current and past clients, I don't think you can, well, maybe our rules are different as far as the financial interest that would cause Councilwoman Shaining to recuse herself, but I don't think that you can get away with the conflict that's been caused by your professional relationship in representing one of our board members, regardless of what the reason is, based on your bar rules. And should you proceed and you get voted on and you were to take this position, I've already been told by several members of our citizens, they will file complaint against the Bar Association for what you'd be doing.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
I would actually like to read that email in its entirety, if you would not mind.
Do you have it?
Do you have a copy of it? I'd love to read it. Okay, so let me first verify. This is my email. It is to Ms. Shunning. The email states, "Dear Delegates, election and campaign integrity matters. I am an attorney, an officer of the court, and a strong conservative in Colorado. I am a district captain in Douglas County, District 1, and a delegate, but I am not a delegate in HD20." As a side note, I don't live here, so that makes me all the more less conflicted. "I've heard many campaign rumors, and I've taken it upon myself." Okay, please let that sink in. This was not as a paid attorney. "I took it upon myself to thoroughly investigate the truthfulness of the rumors in my district and now in yours. To be clear, I do not have any dog in this fight, but I do stand for truth. I'm putting my credibility on the line to certify the statements below. There's a false rumor about Darcy Shunning being a felon. I have researched her background, pulled the court records to review her past. Darcy is not a felon. We must stand against these false rumors. Stop the circular firing squad within the GOP. Stand in the gap. If you like Darcy, rest easy knowing the rumors are attorney-certified lies. Question who would spread such terrible lies? Corey Wise, a campaign opponent? What integrity do you expect from your elected officials? You get to decide that at Assembly. If anyone needs more information or wants to report other rumors needing investigation, please contact my office." And then it says sincerely, "Grant Vanderjot. If she was my client, I would not be allowed to discuss it." Okay? "I did the research on my own to find out the truth, and then I published what I found. You guys are tasking me with the exact same objective today. You're asking me to find the truth and publish it. That's what I intend to do."
Can I clarify then something, please? So, I want to make this clear so I understand this. Trustee Shaining did not contract you for any work?
No.
She was not a client of yours?
She was not a client of mine.
This would be as though somebody said, "In 1987, did Jim Romanella get a speeding ticket in the 405 in California?" And you went and verified whether that happened or not as a matter of fact?
Another constituent asked me to do the research, and it was not paid work. And I did the research because I thought it was the right thing to do. I was presented with evidence at the time that it was wrong, and I looked into it and verified the truthfulness of that statement, that it was in fact false. And I felt like that was important for me as somebody who has special access through the court system to make sure that the minutes and the process were followed. I contacted the attorney that was involved and verified, in fact, it was false.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you feel like this investigation is within the scope of something that you are, you have the ability to accomplish in the next couple weeks, namely by, you know, around December 30th or somewhere in that timeframe?
Quite honestly, no. There's not enough time, but I will give it my best, right? We've got 15 days. That's not a lot of time. I do have the skill sets to read and review and determine what I think happened. I'm happy to investigate and talk with people, and that would be the task. So, do I have the skill set? Yes. Do I have the time? No. I will give it my best. I will give a report at the end of the period. I think the end of the year is when you want the report. Will it be complete? Probably not, but I can, at the very least, make initial determinations of what I think happened.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
May I clarify? From our perspective, what came up, just so you're aware, and I don't know how much you've been filled in on anything, but what's come up is the fact that there was an issue committee that received a gift in kind from the Town of Monument. And as you're aware, that's a violation of Colorado statute. So all we're, I mean, just as a preliminary investigation, we're not trying to turn this into a witch hunt or anything like that, but we just want to know. It may just be that we need training, and, you know, everybody needs to know what's going on. So I just wanted, would like to do, you know, from my perspective, just a preliminary investigation, which is probably all you have time to do, to say, you know, what's, you know, what happened here and how did this take place? And I think that is a very, hopefully that's a doable scope in the next two weeks, just the initial what happened and detail. I know there's a lot of speculations, and a lot of people want to, you know, report here and there and say this and say that, and I think we need, that's why we needed independent counsel to be able to verify the facts and not just go off of rumors or somebody's comments and stuff like that. So that's my perspective on it.
Any other questions? I do have a question. We did pass at the last special meeting a resolution to launch the investigation, and so the resolution does include weekly updates to the town council, and the dates are approximate, you know, because we don't know how this will go. But we had put weekly updates, say, December 19th to December 27th, and that's flexible. What would you think would be the best way to provide an update on how the investigation is going? If you're making progress and you've been able to reach X amount of people, out of how many you want to talk to or whatever, what do you think is the best way, the most efficient way to give us updates?
Quite honestly, I don't think that updates would be appropriate, given the timeline. It would give particular people special access, and I think that's, that would be unfair.
Sorry?
I, my personal opinion is that I should be doing the investigation and then presenting to everybody the findings without anybody having special access to me or anything else. If I am, if I'm hired, I would come and I would do my interviews. I would ask that anybody, staff or otherwise, respect the process, allow me to do my job, not try to prevent me from getting access to documents or whatever records are necessary, and then just let me have the time. I'm going to have to, you know, honestly, push pretty hard, given my own family schedule and my own current client load. 15 days is probably going to be more like eight days that I can give to the board or the town council, and in that eight days, I just have to push through it. I don't want to be doing updates.
Okay.
In our board packet, we had your resume, et cetera, but could you, for the record, explain why you would be qualified and what your expertise has been and how you'd be qualified for handling this situation?
Well, first, the qualification that is required is being an attorney. I am duly licensed in Colorado to practice law. My license is active. I would hope that nobody files any ethics complaints, although you're free to do that. I've never had an ethics complaint filed against me in the past. I hope that nobody tries to do that. Anyway, I have the skill set, being able to read super fast, understand the legal consequence of it, draft legally binding documents, and be able to reconcile the data that I've got into a legal argument. The one caveat I have to really express is, if I come across something that's an affirmative reporting situation, then my law license requires me to make certain reports. I would recommend to the town council, given what I've just been explained about part of the issue, is you may want to consider my report privately before you discuss it publicly. I don't really think that a lot of this is for public consumption, particularly if it's an educational moment for the town council. That being said, I can't necessarily limit my duties, which are independently driven by the Supreme Court. If I come across certain information, I must, I have a separate, independent affirmative duty to report certain actions. So if I come across certain conduct, I must report it. But to the extent that I'm capable, I would really recommend that the town council keep it private.
I would like to clarify one thing, and that is, when I was talking about updates from the prior resolution, that had nothing to do with what your findings are, when I was talking about the updates.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see. So then we're targeting a report, say, December 30th, roughly?
That's correct. The earliest that I would be willing to produce the report or any draft of it would be the 30th.
Okay.
I think that's just only fair to everybody.
Okay, that makes sense. Mr.-
Mayor Pro Tem, may I just add something? The 30th for the Town of Monument is a holiday.
Okay, 29th?
29th.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman.
As long as everybody's on the same page, that's really what I'm driving at.
Okay. Mr. Foreman, would you be the key contact for Mr. Vanderjot for-
I have to remind the board that I will be on vacation for the next two weeks. It's already scheduled, and I'm not going to be here.
Who would you like then to be the key contact for Mr. Vanderjot?
I'll be Laura Ho.
Okay.
Is she going to be the acting town manager?
If she's not, I'll still be the town manager.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you were-
I'm just not going to be at work.
Got it. Okay.
So to clarify, you're going to be the active town manager, but you're not able to get Mr. Vanderjot any information that he may request of you?
I have vacation notice. We sent out all the information that you need.
If you're the acting town manager-
I'm not the acting town manager. Let me correct you. I'm the town manager.
Right, but while you're gone, there's nobody acting as town manager.
I'm still available to take phone calls and emails.
But not to help, but not to assist Grant?
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I'll clarify that. No.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so you're able to take phone calls. That's great. Okay.
Take emails. I'll be available. I've done this plenty of times when I've left town. Y'all have all contacted me. We've handled emergencies and everything like that with me being out of town.
Yes, we have. Thank you.
Great, okay. Any other questions from the board or comments?
Yes. Do we think we need to amend the previous resolution to remove those dates and replace it with a final report on December the 29th?
We probably should, because right now the investigation says completed by December 30th, and we should state the report due on December 29th. So this was previously passed.
I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter. If it's completed by the 30th, I'll have it too.
Right. If it's within that, if it was going to extend, then that would be-
Different.
An issue, yeah.
And the purpose of me telling you that, that we're going to have a holiday on the 30th is just in case you call a special meeting.
No one would be here.
He was just asking you not to call it on the 30th, because we have a holiday and town hall is going to be closed.
Understand.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, any other questions, comments?
Are we moving on from? I don't have any further questions for him, but if we're going to move on to discussion about the resolution itself, then I will.
Yes, we can, we can go ahead, and if you'd like to take a seat, Mr. Vanderjot, that'd be great. Thank you.
Everybody else is good? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat myself from last week with a little bit of extra information. This is the second resolution in, actually, a week where the resolution, so I did a little research. The resolution's supposed to appropriately reflect the intent. I don't think it does. The whereas statements provides the rationale for the course of action, and the resolved statements are the only part of the resolution that the board acts upon. I don't see a resolution in writing that has anywhere as or any resolved statements which would cause any action to be taken. This is the second one in a week where we have yet just a title. I think it's unorthodox, given the fact that for the last two and a half years that I've sat on the board, I've never seen a resolution that has no meat to it. I don't understand why we're not following our standard process for resolutions, because we certainly wouldn't be doing that with an ordinance. But anyway, in the board packet that we did have this time, which we didn't have on Monday, we were given specific information that it would appear several members want investigated. It included campaign finance complaint, which was filed by Mayor Pro Tem Elliott versus Monument Citizens for Home Rule, signed October 21st, report of contribution expenditures by the Citizens for Home Rule Issue Committee, a regular return on the 4th, an amended return on the 18th, and an amended return on the 12th. It included a list of names of those elected to the Home Rule Charter Committee, which should not be confused with the Monument Citizens for Home Rule Issue Committee, pictures of a yard sign that names the issue committee with a QR code, vote yes, and a check mark, a door hanger that states Home Rule Charter, vote yes, and a QR code, along with the town logo, the executive profile for Mr. Vanderjot, and the attorney engagement letter. What is missing, glaringly missing, is the fact that the decision by the hearing officer, Attorney Jeff Wilson, in relation to the complaint that was filed by Mayor Pro Tem Elliott, which was dismissed, is not in the board packet. "The reason for the dismissal was because the complaint was answered with sufficient cure by the respondent, and the complaint wholly failed to comply with the clear and basic requirements for a lawful complaint under the town's ordinance." Also missing was evidence of the reimbursement from TriLakes Printing to the town for the materials printed for the Monument Citizens of Home Rule. Also missing, yet by requests made today by several board members, were information pieces about the invoices that were paid by TriLakes to both TriLakes and our attorney that we hired by the Home Rule Charter Committee. The point I'm trying to make here is, it is clear to me that this board knows how to actually conduct an investigation, and that spending money on Mr., well, anybody, not, it's not you, any attorney, is not required. You all have asked questions to the town staff. You've pulled them in off their vacations, and they have shown their loyalty, their dedication to participate in this, even when they were, their plans with their families during the holidays have been ruined by two special meetings in a week, and you have made it abundantly clear you know how to ask questions of the town staff. I don't see a valid reason for us to spend more money when the town has been made whole and the town staff has been answering your questions, even coming in when they have not, were not supposed to be here. I don't understand why would this, why would we be entertaining a resolution to spend right up front a $10,000 retainer with hourly rates that have been given in the letter of engagement that exceeded the previous attorney you tried to bring in last, or on Monday? The rates have gone up exponentially, and yet you've proven for free, you all know how to ask questions, and the board is cooperating, even though it's impacted their family. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, the town staff have been wonderful. I'm not qualified to be somebody that would conduct an independent investigation. I think that the requests, at least the request that I asked today, was to understand what's the balance for the remaining $60,000 that was approved for the Home Rule Committee? And the remaining balance is $39,701.26. Thank you to Steve Murray and Mr. Foreman for getting that. So I was interested in understanding that, knowing what was not spent to, not for investigative purposes, obviously, but for understanding that account and potentially if the money for the investigation could come from that account, you know. So that was my question. So I wasn't really doing investigative work, but I know that people have had individual questions, and Mr. Foreman had told me that there were some questions that went to you from Councilman Romanello. And so I think I trust that you were doing that to answer your own questions and not to conduct an investigation.
Excuse me, if I may. If the attorney is hired, he's going to be asking questions, which is the same thing you did. So you had a question in mind to get an answer. He will likely do the exact same thing, but it will cost us to do it. And he will be doing it during a time that this board on December 5th told the town staff Merry Christmas, no more meetings. And now we are two in a week. There'll be another one the day before the holiday, and I find it completely unacceptable that this board is going back on their word about how much they supposedly care about the town staff.
I don't, I don't know why we're using the town staff as an example. Go ahead.
So the new information that we've discovered after the last meeting has what's caused the board meeting schedule to change. That was not known before the December 5th, and as you can probably tell by that last meeting, when I spoke during board comment, I did think that was my last meeting and that was the original intent until we discovered new information.
Well, additionally, if we had settled the questions that were being thrown around Tuesday, and perhaps if we had a little bit of help putting the resolution and packet together, we wouldn't have to have a meeting on Thursday. So had we settled on an attorney Tuesday and gotten that over with, we would be well on our way. So we can continue having these meetings if we're not going to settle things in a timely manner. But the question of the filing complaint, that's just a question of a late filing. None of us care about the fact that it was filed late. What we're looking into is the misappropriation of funds. There is no current investigation into the potential illegal expenditure of taxpayer dollars. I don't know how, why we continue to have to labor on that. If I went out and used the Town of Monument money and bought myself a new car, I bet the tone in this room would be entirely different. But because it was used for an issue that it seems like some of the board members are okay with, we continue to come back and come back to, well, the town was made whole. They gave it back. But again, would you be saying the same thing if somebody stole one of the police cars out here and then gave it back? It doesn't work that way. You can roll your eyes at me all you want, but you know why we're doing this investigation. I think Mr. Vander, I think Mr. Vander Yacht wanted to address the question.
As a special investigator, my role is actually to not just find the facts and ask the questions. The reason that an attorney is needed is because I need to be able to bridge those facts, the answers to my questions over to what the law interprets that as and make recommendations based on what I find. So yes, you guys have clearly asked a lot of questions. The final question I have to answer is, what does that mean? Right? If there was criminal conduct, what laws were violated? If there was administrative violations, how should you proceed with that? Right? I'm a general practitioner. I practice many areas of law. And that is what gives me a better understanding. I can read the facts and say, well, these administrative laws apply. This is how your employee handbook would apply. This is how all of those different things, the ordinances, how does it all apply? If there was something, it's like a brainstorming moment. I get to look at it from a legal perspective and say, what conduct matches with the law and what does that mean? And then make recommendations to you. You guys are effectively the judge, and you're hiring a committee, me, to go and act in a fully investigatory role and then report back to you for your final decision on what you want to do.
Thank you.
To that point, just so you know, SIRSa, our insurance carrier, has provided us a list of four attorney names. It appears to me, and I don't know who, why it hasn't happened, but the four names of the attorneys have not been called by anybody on the board or because there's been no direction to do so. In fact, you're the second private attorney that somebody on the board has sought out for whatever reason, instead of going to the ones that our carrier has said, in order to investigate this, these are the four names that we recommend. I don't believe your name was, my recall doesn't, your name wasn't on the list. I don't have a problem with you being impressive background, but we typically follow what SIRSa tells us to do when it comes to legal matters. In this case, my fellow council members have just ignored that. Okay. Also, if I may, a resident of the town has come forward and said they made a mistake. They apologize for their mistake. They made the town whole by reimbursing the, paying the original bill to the vendor that printed the materials that were deemed electioneering. And to me, when that happens, I would like to think that our residents, because they were forthright in it and paid it themselves, that that would be okay. And if there are mistakes that, I'm all fine with us figuring out where the mistakes were made because it's been discussed a little bit about the next time that there's going to be material printed, the board would actually have to approve it first to make sure no electioneering information is, you know, on the material. But instead, despite the lack, they, this sounds like it's not for educational reasons. I don't believe that they are because when the resident comes forward and says, I apologize, I made a mistake, here's the money back. There's good people in the Town of Monument, so I just don't believe that they did it with ill will.
May I respond? To your first point about SIRSa and the attorneys, any attorney can do the work and SIRSa is required to pay that attorney. They may negotiate the rate, but an insurance company can't deny you coverage because you select your own attorney. They typically have preferred attorneys. That typically means that the attorney has contacted them in advance and worked out some special payment program. So that shouldn't be a bar to being able to be a special investigator because I'm not on their list. If anything, that could be a conflict. If I were to find a violation within the town and SIRSa was obligated to pay for that violation, if there was money connected to it, in my judgment, that would actually create a conflict. To your second point about education, I agree that this is a educational mission that, and I don't know the full scope of this. This could be criminal. I have no idea how far. But I cannot say that it's limited to just a member of the constituent, of the community. There are other folks that work here, and to the extent that they need to be held accountable or haven't already been held accountable, I do believe that the investigation in the final legal conclusion presented to you is an important step that needs to be taken in order to fix the underlying issues. If these things are happening, or if, I hate to say it, if your legal counsel is allowing some of this to happen, that needs to be addressed, and it's going to require another attorney stepping forward and addressing that.
I'd like to just ask you a question again because you brought up your date, the dates that would be your timeframe to get this done and get it done correctly. It's been said here that time is of the essence in order to get this accomplished. I don't find that to be the case because the next election, where the possibility that this campaign finance violation could occur again, would more than likely be in November 2024, unless for some reason we had another special item on the ballot for November 2023. To avoid any further special meetings, if, should you be selected to do this, I'm just going to state that I am not going to hold you to December 30th and mess up your family's plans or the town staff's family's plans. It can go into calendar year 2023 because I don't believe that time of the essence makes a difference here. If we want to get to the truth, and it's going to take you more time to do it, and we don't have an election for 23 months, then the possibility of this repeating itself does not exist.
May I respond?
Yeah.
I do agree. I agree that the timing of this is, the investigation should continue. I think that we're opening a can of worms that maybe it's as much as an audit, as much, you know, as your procedures, the Town of Monument's procedures need to be audited. And in more of a deeper way than what eight days to 15 days can accomplish. That being said, some of the testimony and things like that could be fleeting. Typically, when a special investigator comes in, the shredding starts. You want to make sure that you catch some of that before the evidence is destroyed. So some of it's urgent, some of it's not. I think that there needs to be more than what I can do in 15 days, but I haven't been exposed to the full scope of it yet.
Mayor, can I clarify something real quick about SIRSa? We contacted SIRSa, and SIRSa does not cover it, so on this kind of issue and this kind of matter. So we are not covered under insurance by SIRSa. And so that is why they gave us the four contacts that I provided to the board.
Thank you for adding that. Justin, I do recall that from your email. So when Mr. Foreman had provided those names to us, we, various people had called various attorneys at that time. And when we originally had Mr. Gessler as the second resolution in the previous meeting, we had not had full conversations with Mr. Vander Yacht as of yet. And in looking at the fact that Mr. Vander Yacht is more local than Mr. Gessler, and we know that, you know, since you're much closer, it might be a little bit easier to interview face to face versus over the phone, long distance. And so we thought that that would help with efficiency and getting to the bottom of this a little bit quicker than if everything's conducted remotely and accessed remotely. So that's why we have the switch in the attorney. Both were very well qualified, but we thought this could get completed faster with Mr. Vander Yacht.
May I respond?
Yes.
First, I'd like to respond to Mr. Foreman's comment about SIRSa. Colorado has a bad faith denial law. It is not for SIRSa to tell the town whether or not they're covering an issue that has not been, has not been opened yet. We don't know what the issue is.
The file was FCPA.
Okay, but what I'm saying is.
Told, and that's what we asked SIRSa, that's what we requested, was to ask SIRSa if we're covered under an FCPA complaint, and I said no.
As we investigate, we'll identify what those issues are. I can look at the insurance. I'm not going to be the attorney for the town, but I can read that document and make a conclusion as far as what I believe is the appropriate coverage by SIRSa. I'm just saying that making an advanced denial before they know what the issue is, is the definition of a bad faith denial. To Ms. Elliott's point on Scott Gessler, he's a fantastic attorney. I have absolutely nothing against Scott Gessler. But I want to make this very clear. My position is truth over politics, right? I've made no secret about the fact that I challenge people in my own party all the time. My politics do not conflict with my duty as an attorney or me as a person. The reason I'm particularly active in politics is to stay true to my principles. And if my party wants to go a different direction, have at it. And I know Mr. Gessler is also a politically active attorney. So I just want to let you guys know that this is not a political action. I am political. It's my civic duty. But in that civic duty, I always keep the pursuit of justice and truth as my core principle.
Thank you.
So Mayor Pro Tem, may I ask another question? So what's going to be the expectation of employees who are on vacation? Because this time of the year typically is a slower time of the year for the Town of Monument. And as we have done in the past, and the board is completely aware of this, we run on the skeleton crew here the last couple of weeks of the year. And so we have front desk staff, we have police here, we have public works here. A lot of people that will be involved in this investigation may have vacation. So I just need to know what is the expectation of the board, including myself? I mean, I would love to answer all these questions. I've told the board previously that staff could answer your, all these questions you want to hear right now, we could answer those in a public meeting right now. We have no problem answering those. We're not trying to hide anything. I've heard people say that there could be criminal activity and stuff like that. We haven't done anything wrong. None of the staff have. And so if you want to ask us questions, we can ask, we can answer them right now.
Mr. Vander Yacht, would you give us some idea of which staff members you may need access to? How much, what type of materials that may be of the utmost importance for you in the first week of this? Or what you kind of, I think you might be able to answer Mr. Foreman's question a little better.
I hate to say it, but all of that information, I really can't limit it. The staff that participated, that endorsed the conduct, all of that information, emails, phone logs, ledgers, accounting ledgers, all of that is what's needed.
So could we, could you designate one employee to work with him?
I'm going to need to know one answer to a question also. Is he going to be core requesting these?
You could probably answer that better. Wouldn't that be out of necessity if there were a lack of cooperation?
No, this is not a public request for the documents. This is the town board, the town's council that is asking for it. So it's my understanding, and I'm not your legal counsel here, but it's my understanding that you guys have the same authorities as a court would. So you can authorize me to get the information, almost like having a warrant for the information. So if I ask for it, I get it.
Okay, I can, I don't know people's vacation schedules right now. On Monday, I will find out their vacation schedules and I can assign somebody to it.
Okay.
And I will be available by phone. If you need to ask me any questions, I'll be available by phone.
Thank you. I will say that one of my concerns as it relates to when this report will be ready is Mr. LeKind, Councilman LeKind has stated multiple times he is in support of this investigation. And I appreciate that. But there are other elected officials that are not on the board yet that will change over on January 3rd that are slamming the four of us, for lack of a better word, on the media, saying the four of us are illegitimate, meaning Councilman Stevens, myself, Councilman Romanello, and Councilwoman Shanning. So when the slamming of us on the internet, and they're clearly, at prior meetings, been against this investigation, even though Mr. LeKind is in support of it, my concern is that it will go away when you haven't finished it because the number of people on the future board are going to outnumber Mr. LeKind, and therefore this could be voted down or stopped by the future board. And that's, that's my concern.
May I respond?
Yes.
I would hope that that would not be the case. Obviously, I can't talk to the future board. I don't think that this investigation is outcome determinative of whether or not the charter is going to be upheld or anything like that. Certainly, I don't know what, I can't predict what I'm going to find, but I don't think it's outcome determinative in any direction. I don't know why they would be afraid. I would hope that they would embrace transparency and especially the educational curve. I hope that any staff that I find may have violated, a rule can be rehabilitated and taught the right ways to move forward. I see that more as my goal than proving that somebody did something wrong. I would like to help teach them. I've done a lot of. I would like to help teach them. I've done a lot of campaign finance law. I've done a lot of criminal law. So I want to help make the town of Monument better. I want to help make our elected officials better. I, it's, it's not that I don't live here. I live really close to here, right? So you guys are my neighbors anyway, and I really want to hold all elected officials to a higher standard and teach them to keep that bar. So that's the way I, I live my life is trying to help other people, lift them up. I'm not trying to tear people down. Uh, so I would, I would ask the future board that's not here to, uh, just ta- take a second look at it. I don't think, from my perspective, it's not politically motivated. Finding truth and shedding light on something can only lead to making you guys better.
Mayor, can I have one more question?
Yes.
I apologize for all these questions.
That's okay.
I'm learning as I go on this because it's the first time for me also. So typically, the town would have a town attorney that would support the town and would be involved in this investigation and would cooperate with him along with town staff. Can I have the ability to hire a town attorney to be there for the town with the investigator and town staff?
I think that it makes sense to have an attorney representing the town, the town and the town staff.
Right. So, and currently, our town attorney is conflicted in this issue. And so you've given me the right to hire an attorney to support staff?
On, on a, you're talking about a contractual basis?
Yes.
Temporarily?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you think, board?
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
Yes.
Have any issue?
I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, I just may say, I think I really appreciate your temperament and really appreciate that you are here to try to make Monument better. And I think that's my goal here. I feel like it is my, uh, duty, you know, uh, to be able to get to the bottom of whatever, whatever causes. If it's just an education issue, I'm happy just to do the training. And, uh, so I do want to say that I appreciate, and there's been so much emotion on both sides. I think that's why an independent council is critical for us to bring in because that's the only way we can get to the bottom. Otherwise, this going back and forth will just go on and on and on, and there'll be allegations. But with an independent council, I believe this is, uh, will help us get to the bottom of it. I think you've got the right temperament and the right, how shall I say, the right perspective on, you know, trying to find out what the issue actually is. And I appreciate, you know, what you've said so far. Thank you.
If I can respond to the request for the attorney, I don't have really any issue with the town having counsel. My concern would be, uh, that, that, that most of the staff is immune because they are staff. So with that being said, I'm not sure what we would be defending against except for, and I hate to say it, obstructing the investigation. I would love to be able to have access to the individuals and their testimony without fear of anything. They're all, all of the staff is immune with the exception of anyone who is, has separate affirmative duties from any sort of criminal conduct, um, or civil conduct related to this because they were acting in their official capacity. So given that they have government immunity, I would suggest that you wouldn't be getting your value. Certainly, the individuals who have an independent duty should have their own personal attorney, um, and I'm sure they will.
I'll take your advice under consideration, but I would be more, I would be, I'd feel more comfortable for my staff if we had a town attorney that could represent.
I don't, I mean, I don't see why it's necessary and it with the, what is it, what is it?
Staff doesn't see what's necessary to hire investigator either, but you're going to do that. So why don't you give us the right to be able to hire an attorney that can represent us?
I'm not, here's the thing. I mean, we have email. It's clear that none of us are being investigated for what happened here in these emails. I'm not saying that staff has any wrongdoing. I, I even said in the last meeting that I'm, I don't, where I'm at is, you know, like Mr. Vander Yacht says, there is the, um, governmental immunity. So
Yeah, but typically, we would have a town attorney that would represent us and be, be working side by side with him. And all I'm asking for is just follow what we normally do.
That's true, because you don't have Catherine.
If we, exactly. If we investigate a police officer or a public works official internally, the town attorney is involved in that. And so if you're investigating employees, I believe that the right thing to do is to have an, to have a town attorney temporarily be involved in that so that he can guide, not him, that he can guide the town staff and what their abilities are to provide the right information. We want to make sure that we cooperate and that we provide everything that he wants and we don't miss anything.
But, uh, with it being holidays, when would you expect to have an attorney in place?
Well, I probably will have to come off my vacation on Monday and start looking for that. I've talked to one today and I'm going to see what his, uh, and he already is a contract with the town of Monument. And that would be the easiest thing to do. He is our prosecutor. And so if I can get him to take this on for this role, um, then I would hire him.
Okay, um, I just don't want, I just wouldn't want to find ourselves in a situation.
Town attorney for multiple seats.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to find ourselves in a situation where, um, you know, you previously mentioned you would assign a staff member to, to assist Mr. Vander Yacht. So what I don't want to see happen is, well, we don't have an attorney yet, so none of this information is forthcoming because until there's an attorney in place, there's still an obligation to, um, comply with the investigation.
Right, but we're going to, I mean, we're going to do everything we can to get an attorney as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Like I said, I started today.
Thank you.
Can I address that? If there's an attorney that's representing the staff, I have to communicate through the attorney and not directly with the staff for every contact. I would not be able to finish this. And then secondarily, there would be a conflict if I had a determination that there was wrongdoing and we had a prosecutor who was the town attorney, the prosecutor's office would have a conflict. And you would have to have a special outside counsel to do the prosecution of whatever I find.
He's a prosecutor of municipal issues, not anything above municipal. He just does traffic tickets and stuff like that.
He's, he's in the prosecutor's office is the problem.
Here, here for the town of Monument, not in, not in district court. I, I believe that this was an FCPA complaint and there was violations found. It wouldn't be heard in municipal court, correct?
Under the Charter for the Town of Monument, all of this would be held in the municipal court because it's involving the charter is my understanding.
We can look for another attorney then.
But to clarify, you can speak with staff directly up until the point that an attorney is hired.
Yes, and once an attorney is hired, I would have to have a waiver from him to continue to speak to those staff members.
Okay. So do we want, do we have a motion to, uh, give Mr. Foreman permission to hire an attorney on a contractual basis to represent the town and not delay the actual investigation even if, even if there is a delay in hiring an attorney?
Well, Mr. Vander Yacht did say that he can proceed with the investigation and contact staff directly up until the point where an attorney comes on board. And then at that point, that's when obviously we will see this slowdown. So thinking.
Do we have a motion?
We have this worded, what, what's the, what's the word? I'll make a motion to allow the town manager to hire a contracted attorney for the, the, uh, course of the investigation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanning?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Potem Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember LeKind?
Yes.
That motion passes four to one. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Vander Yacht? From the board?
Why, um, uh, on the topic of what we're talking about, well, questions for him directly or que- or comments on this issue area or?
Any, any issue on the issue?
Okay, I, um, I did ask a couple of questions this morning and I did want to thank, uh, Mike and staff for going above and beyond board, which they definitely did. Uh, I was trying to put together some pieces in my mind to be prepared for tonight because I did not feel at our last meeting that I had a good grasp on everything. And what has come to light since then in information I requested and obviously publicly even on the news, uh, to put this together more as to why, uh, we're here. What I see and, and what I requested I saw was sent to everybody today, even though it was in the board packet. We did all receive that information and I believe because we did all receive it today, we could discuss it or we could have it passed around if we need to. I know that, that trustee Shanning had made some copies, et cetera. And I know that the town was made whole later from, um, I guess, uh, Brandy Turner, who was the secretary of the Home Rule Committee. I don't know what all the, the communications and, and what was going on there. But, um, what I do see is, is that there was, you know, money given to the town to buy signs for a ballot issue, which is not kosher, that there was a newly elected council person that was involved in the approving and or picking up or ordering, um, those signs, which I believe people should be aware of, um, that the filing did not include that until a complaint was challenged and then it was corrected. Um, and then when a special meeting was called, then all of a sudden the money was paid back like the day before the special meeting. None of that just looks or smells good. Um, I, that's just the way I see it. I'm not against or for anybody and nor am I here as a lot of people were accused of whether it's political posturing, I, I really don't have a dog in the fight. I have two more years of my term. I, I, um, think that, uh, Councilman and soon to be Mayor LeKind is going to do a phenomenal job as mayor and I support him a thousand percent and said I would from day one, and I still do. Uh, and in fact, I'm kind of more happier mayor now than me anyway, to be perfectly honest about it. So there's that. Um, and so I don't have any sour grapes about anything. It's the fact that as I look at this and then I look at the emails that, that were made public, you know, on the news that there was approvals for this and, uh, whether the, you know, the, the Home Rule Commission or, or whoever involved in using funds to do this on their own initiative or were told, uh, by somebody that it was okay, i- i- is the issue, particularly if it was from, uh, council in some way would be very, very concerning, uh, very, very concerning. So when I look at all that, um, that is why I think this needs to be looked at, especially beings unfortunately as our town attorney, interim town attorney is a conflict of interest because she was in, involved and active, uh, in running that. That is where I'm coming from as I put all these pieces together since the last meeting and why I see something needs to be addressed. And, and Mr. Foreman, you offered questions. I, I would love to hear, uh, around any of this, uh, what your, what your, big picture view is of how all this happened. Uh, if you have a comment to that, I, I'd love to hear it.
Well, you want to ask me a specific question?
Um, okay, well, did, uh, did people from the commission act on their own on getting these done or were they directed to do it? Were they told by, uh, their home rule attorney that it was okay to do it? Now, how's that?
I don't have any information that they're, the home rule attorney told them to do this, so.
Or said, or gave a hand wave that it was okay to do it?
I have no information on that.
Okay, so then when the approval, when the, when the bill, because obviously the, the, the invoice was made out to the town. So the people involved in ordering or getting the signs were aware that the town was paying for it, for a ballot issue, which is not lawful. How did, were you involved in any of the dialogue about that or, 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 okay, can you share with me any of that, please?
So we, we had told the home rule, you gotta remember, there's a separation, home rule commission issued.
I do, which is why I'm asking these questions. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I'm trying to understand.
Just like the town had done three other times, the town had bought educational materials for a ballot issue before it got on the ballot, okay? By the board, we had it for home rule when we were, uh, educating the community about, uh, people running for the Home Rule Commission. We had education about that. We had education about two F, when it was the police department half-cent sales tax, when it failed the first time, we paid for educational materials for that also. Then in two E, the one that passed for the half-cent sales tax for the police department, we had educational materials for that also. So for every one of those issues before they got on the ballot, the town of Monument had paid for educational materials.
That makes sense to have education materials, but telling people which way to vote, um, which are the
Did not pay or knowingly pay for any kind of materials that said vote for.
Not, not in those other cases?
Not in this case.
Knowingly.
We did not knowingly pay for anything. When the, when the bill came in, it did not have any copies of what the signs look like or what the door hangers look like.
Fair enough. So then, so then here's where I guess the clarity needs to come in or where the, the investigation, uh, needs to come in. And, and I see that Mr. Brunk has some information that he could contribute to this if the board is willing to hear him. Uh, but let me finish up, please. So then, in, there is no way that anyone can convince me, and again, I, I, I'm not, I don't, I angry at an individual or, or anybody. There is no way that anybody can convince me that somewhere along the line, somebody knew that they were getting a promotional material, not an educational material. Who was that? How do they think they have authority to do that, et cetera? That is the question I'm trying to find out. It's okay?
No town staff member.
If I may, I think this is part of the investigation that our attorney should be doing.
Okay.
And I, it gets too emotional when we start.
We're here to pass the resolution tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I was just, I was just stating, I was just stating why, how. Okay, I, I apologize. Would you guys be willing to hear any comment that Mr. Brunk has to say he had his hand up and was doing it very respectfully?
We have, we have public comments coming up, so.
We have public comment. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, any other, you, please proceed. Mr. Romanella?
Oh, no, no. I, I was just going to get, 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 I just wanted to say that I, I do appreciate that the town was made whole. Um, I think that somebody had made a comment about, uh, awareness of, of using town funds. And, and I think that it would be, and I was just going to make the analogy, even though it might be a little exaggerated, that whether, and I was going to use a Mr. LeKind and I because it's, it's, it's a non-confrontational example, that whether it was Mr. LeKind or I who, uh, received funds from the town for a vote for Mitch or vote for Jim, whether we had paid the town back to make them whole or not, that would not be okay, whether the town was paid back or not. It would not be an okay action and that would be my point to this and that would be the final. Thank you, Travis Shanning. That, that would be the final thing of what I had to say.
Well, we continue to use the words, and I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm a little bit, I continue to hear this phrase over and over. The town was made whole. The town was made whole. When taxpayer funds are misappropriated, none of us get to decide that the town was made whole. Again, use the analogy of the police car. Use the analogy of me going out and buying five hundred thousand dollars worth of clothes at Macy's on the town of Monument. And then bringing those clothes back. We don't get to decide, we don't get to use the terminology, the town was made whole because we don't know if every taxpayer feels that the town was, that money was given back.
That, that, okay, when, when I meant, when I said made whole, I was acknowledging that the town had been paid back if, if we need to clarify terminology.
That's the same thing I meant, and I can say what I want, actually, whether you like it or not.
Good for you. So can I, mayor-elect.
I do, we'd like to mention one more thing and that is I've served two, over two terms now due to the change in the election date and I was not on the ballot. So I don't have any sort of issues as it relates to, you know, losing an election and wanting this to happen doesn't have, losing an election has nothing to do with wanting to make sure that we understand why the, why and how the taxpayers' funds were used and for electioneering. And Mr. Klein, just want to mention to you that the pictures of the flyers were in the packet because that was part of the complaint and so the complaint was in the packet. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I'd like to go ahead and make a resolution to adopt.
A motion?
Motion, sorry. To adopt Resolution 952022, Resolution to Hire Special Attorney Grant Vander Yott for the Investigation of Concerns the Council has identified related to November 202, Election 2A, and to fully execute Mr. Grant's, Vander Yott's letter of engagement.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Member Shanning?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember LaKind?
No, because I don't believe we need to spend the money to do this investigation as evident by the conversation today with all the questions being asked to try to get to the bottom of things, as well as the emails that have been sent out all day today asking for more information.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes, and the answer is yes, because none of the trustee, none of the council members here are qualified to conduct an investigation and nor are any of us an attorney and have the skill set to conduct an independent investigation, so yes.
I believe I explained my yes vote prior to the vote.
So that motion passes four to one. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments.
Basically, the thing is, the reason why, you know, I'm obviously waiting for public comments, so you're fine, obviously you guys can't ask me questions during that time. That's okay, like, but obviously, like, I know you guys aren't necessarily qualified to do an investigation. Ultimately, Matt Brunk, 17136, just start handing out cards. But on, on that note, and here's the thing, the town being made whole, as Darcy said multiple times, obviously if something illegal was done, there is nobody I've ever talked to, and I'm in communication with a lot of people about it daily, that's trying to sidestep any legal things or do anything like that. They're neat, if there's something illegally done and there's a punishment, like a night in jail or a fine, absolutely, no one is trying to sidestep any of that. So please know that just because someone is made whole, there's obviously a thing that justice is done and justice is both punitive and discipline, right? And so, and corrective. And so the town, the town might get their money back, but if something was illegally done, I didn't necessarily agree with your analogies personally, but because if you bought a car and you pay the money back, it's kind of weird, but all that point is the town was paid back when the knowledge was, was made understood. Your point, whereas the day before the special meeting, yes, that comes off super shady, 100%, absolutely. The reason why was we were trying to figure out what was going on, right? There was just so much going around and so Brandy was like, I'm paying it back and like, cool. And so from that perspective, and when you say that it was, and I'm probably, I can't speak for everybody ultimately, but, and if you're allowed to ask me questions, you can ask me questions. I asked him a question, he didn't necessarily know the answer, or you can, what? Yeah, if you guys want, you can, but. Sorry.
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor Protem and Town Council, the portions on public hearing in your charter don't state that you cannot ask questions during the public hearing statement. However, it also states that portions of the charter can be suspended by a three force vote. And so if you'd like to take a vote, three fourths of you could decide that you could ask questions to members of the public, I would think, as a one-time thing. If you'd like to ask questions during the public hearing, I think that vote would be appropriate if a member would like to make that motion. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion to allow for questions during the public comment to the person that is speaking?
You don't have to, it's okay, I know, like, they'll probably call us anyway.
Okay. There's not, they're not gonna vote then, Mr. Brunk?
So I'll try to keep it short. Ultimately, as you said, no one can be too otherwise. The educational materials that Mike presented us before Homer was done were very like, hey, 93% of the people in Colorado under Home Rule. It seems the stuff that it was, it was like, it was very pro, right? It didn't say yes, it didn't say vote for, it didn't say any of those stuffs. But it was like, hey, this is the benefits of Home Rule, right? They were, the town wanted to put that on the ballot, totally get it. And so when we were coming together to talk about putting these signs together or putting these things together, we're like, we didn't see an issue because, and to be fair, we were not educated on what we couldn't put and could not put on there. From that perspective, we then got it together, put the signs together and got them printed, right? And so we'd been working with Mike and the town for many weeks and many months. I think he saw our ethics and how we handled ourselves and things like that. And so there was a trust that was built there that we were doing everything right. And we believed we were doing everything right when, and the people that went made these signs believed that. And so because we spent six months or whatever it was, of course we want it to pass. And so when we presented educational materials, we thought we were producing educational materials. It was then shown that it is not educational but promotional and that makes total sense. Once that came out, it was very clear, it was like, okay. And so then the debate was, like, how, how, how do we deal with that, right? And so at that point, it was like, you know what, like, let's, like, there was a lot of guilt's the wrong word, but like, man, it's gonna be misunderstood, we don't, we don't want people to be thrown under the bus, we don't want anything, we don't want to be misrepresented. I think you guys, if anything, you can feel that way. Let me pause for a second. I am very sorry. I meant to come up and that was the first thing I meant to say. I apologize for putting your wife in that situation and coming up in here and handling it the way that I did. And so I want to apologize to you and if she was here, I would do the same. And so I just want to let you know that, yeah, we've all lost our cool at different times and I know if I was on record for everything I said, it wouldn't be great, so. But to that point was, is ultimately, and I think you guys too, you want what's best for the town. And so the question I do have for you guys and I do have for Mr. Vander, I want to keep saying Mr. Vanderjack because it's a kicker, but anyway, is from that perspective, if what Brandy posted on Facebook that most of you probably are read and everything we're telling you is true and the lawyer didn't see it and Mike never saw it, all these things, and it ends up being what we're saying it is. Like, my, my fear is, is that we spend $10,000, $20,000 or whatever it may be to find out that that's exactly what it is and the punitive response is like, just paying it back. Now, if it's more, obviously night in jails, fines, whatever, it is what it is. No one's saying, don't do that, right? And no one, I've, like, no one is saying, don't follow through. When, when Mitch says, hey, we're gonna continue this on, when you're on the board too, I know Steve and I know Santa well enough to know they're gonna, on the same boat. Everybody, I think the struggle with, with our town and our struggle, the reason I even got in the first place was it just was a lack of transparency and a lack of understanding. And so for them to run on transparency and honesty and then, and then squash it or push it down and say it doesn't happen, that's not who they are. And I would be the first one to go, that's not who, what you ran on. And so I guess what I, I'd like for you guys to ask those questions, not necessarily now, but later on even going like, at the end of the day, if everything that, that Brunk is saying is true or Brandy posted on Facebook, all those things are true, what, what is the most likely outcome of the investigation? And if he goes, well, it's just some education, then I would go, is that, is that worth all the money being spent? Ultimately, you do what you gotta do, but I just, I, I want to value the taxpayers' money and I want to do what's right. At some point, something, you know what I mean? So if you just feel like, I'm not just talking, so thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your heart.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Kimball?
Glad to go to Christmas party, so have a good night.
Merry Christmas.
Good evening, Kenneth Kimball, 16151 St. Lawrence Way. Let me first open up by stating there is a fine line between confidence and arrogance. Arrogance is going to cost taxpayers money. Let's just say conservatively, the lawyer fees are $300 an hour, potentially $40 of this investigation of work comes to roughly $12,000 plus filing paperwork, other legal fees for a potential mistake of $2,512. Residents of Monument see these meanings as a paragraph. I seem to remember these words being used on flyers that supported against the 2A measure. In fact, I was personally called progressive on those flyers. I have been recently called a liberal and a pit bull for the mayor. Where all of you claimed during your election campaigns, you were fiscally conservative, yet willing to hastily rush into spending taxpayer, taxpayer funds without truly looking and following town ordinance. You have stated this is an emergency matter, must be taken care of immediately, yet the next election isn't until 2024, now it's disrupting people's lives, their health, their well-being and their booked travel plans for the holiday. Hope this sits well with all of you. Clearly, if you follow the town ordinance, Section 1.14.010, Complaints, Duties of the Town Clerk, state how to take care of matter of potential fair campaign practice act. This ordinance mirrors the Colorado revised statute, Article 45 FCPA. A resident of the town believes a violation has occurred, must file a complaint with the town clerk. The written complaint shall be filed to the town clerk no later than 30 days. Upon receipt of the complaint, the town clerk must send a notice to the respondent. The respondent has 30 days from the date of the notice to cure the allegations in the complaint or respond to the complaint. And in that, in most cases, that's what is recommended by the hearing officer as found in other situations around the state of Colorado. The hearing officer must determine by a preponderance of evidence if a violation of article has been committed. Now I'm looking, I'm looking, I am for looking into this matter. You call an investigation, I'd call it following town ordinance because once you submit the written letter, it has to be followed through, it can't be canceled out. So there shouldn't be a worry about myself or any other inbound council person taking over on January 3rd, especially knowing the matter of the funds. One of my things, my true question is, are we following the town ordinance here by the T? Or have we skipped and gone around certain things? Especially knowing the matter, knowing the matter of the funds has been cured, yet everyone is up in arms about the FCPA rule. How is this going to make everyone look by wasting taxpayers' money? Especially if it turns out to, about this that it's inadvertently a mistake. We're looking at $12,000 or more. How many bulletproof vests could that money purchase for our police? How many projects could we take care of if we went, if we gave it to our Parks and Rec team? How many sidewalks could it repair in our town and get them up to ADA standards? How much could that help our Public Works Department? So much to unravel. Filing a written complaint and following the process will take care of everything following in accordance with the town ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, your time is up.
My last question I have for you is, have we looked at the last two F banners and signs what they say and has, that was never investigated? A new beginning is gonna start January 3rd. Respectful, consider adults were voted in.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, your time is up.
That you have broken with the residents, business and the staff.
Anyone else like to speak that's within the room for or against? Yes.
Laura McGraw, I've had some technical or user issues with trying to get comment in on this madness. I don't even, I don't see any of, I don't see Darcy, Kelly or Ron's name on the Town of Monument's website as being council members anymore. I, go ahead, I would love to hear this.
Mr. Foreman, we have no idea why the current board was taken off the Town of Monument website.
Well, it says they were elected November 8th. And so I don't even think that's legit or legal or has any integrity. And Darcy, get your signs down for God's sakes. What are, what are you trying to prove? What makes you think we still want to see elections, reelection sides, which is too funny and it's sad? Actually, you know what, it's not funny, it's sad. You have two little children who, who, no, I would think that you would want.
Do not talk about family.
Okay. Okay, I shan't. I would just think you would want to be a good influence for the town, for the town. And clean up your mess. Who do, we're not allowed to, people have offered. Have they not? Have people not called? And I, I've emailed you as well, you very kindly responded. Never done this before, I'm very nervous, but I think that the town doesn't need to see your name anymore and you're not even on this website. So I feel like you're being elected or, I don't know what the word is. Appointed. It's legit and plus, Darcy has, hold on, let me find something. Okay, I don't know what this was posted on, but it says, Darcy Shanning, I don't know how to say your name, from Monument, Colorado. Reminder, my campaign kickoff with special guest Congressman Doug Lamburn is this Sunday at 5:00 PM in Monument. We had an overwhelming response to host inquiries and have added a few more. Grant Vander Yott? And Rose, not even gonna try that. Thank you for all your support. I can't wait to see you on Sunday. I don't know how this is even possible. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name's Joe Needler, I live on Lacuna Drive. Sir, I know you won't know until you get into digging it, but what would be the range of your costs?
So I am paid hourly according to my agreement. It can take, depending on how long they want the investigation to go and how they want the education to go, there's really not a cap to it. I do expect it to be somewhere in the realm of 10 grand.
And it's high as?
I don't know the limit of what that, they would, they would be better to answer that question because I don't know the extent of the investigation or the education.
Fair enough. And now hire an attorney?
Probably in the same range, depending on the number of hours.
So we're gonna spend $20,000 to chase down 2,500 that's been returned to the the city, is that correct? In simple terms? Is that, as a taxpayer, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's a pretty lousy way to spend my money. And then on top of that, based on what Mr. LaKind said, all the dots and the Ts were across and putting together this resolution, he's already told you he needs more in two weeks. He's told you that your resources may not be available because you painted yourself in the corner and picked about the worst time of the year, but you want a resolution on this, but you're not willing to allow the appropriate amount of time. I don't know. All I've seen out of this election is pettiness, character assassinations, dirt slinging. This group needs to move on and chase this rabbit. You're, you're, you're running down a rabbit hole that's not gonna get, you're not gonna get much out of it. I think at best what you're gonna find is there was a mistake made. He's already admitted that there was a mistake and maybe they didn't follow protocol, but I don't know, as a taxpayer, you guys need to do a better job.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My comments are a little bit more towards the public in trying to resolve some of your concerns. I think you, you might be pleasantly surprised at the depth of the recommendations that I expect to make. I think that what you've alluded to is probably in large regard true and a lot of procedures, a lot of procedures are being ignored. In my, I think we're gonna see that, for example, having a parliamentarian here today to help make sure that they're following procedures, that education, I hope, will turn a new chapter in the community and teach the newborn. will turn a new chapter in the community and teach the new board, as well as the old board, the right way to do things. And honestly, the attorney has some learning to do as well. So as far as spending the money on something like this, if somebody gets ticketed, you're spending that kind of money to get a prosecution for a traffic offense. Having an attorney do the prosecution, having the officers on the road, that is part of this. It is part of running government. I fully understand the need to make sure that you're tight with your budget. In this case, I really want to appeal to you to understand that we are trying to make Monument function better in the future, and that these core issues are what I'm going to be addressing.
Anyone else? Yes.
Oh, excuse me. I'm Barbara Canet. I'm exceedingly concerned about how much this is going to cost the Town of Monument. I am concerned that four people can make the decision for what this is going to cost the residents of Monument. Mike, I totally agree that you guys need a lawyer. I'm not against that at all. But that is adding yet, you know, more money to this. But I totally agree that you need it. In my view, this is a witch hunt. Hopefully, I can say that. I need you to know that the residents of Monument are in no way concerned about the board that they elected. They are thrilled about the people that are coming in. They are thrilled about the ethics of these people, the morals of these people. They are thrilled to have a new board, and you need to know that. Ms. Elliott has nothing to worry about. What the Town of Monument worries about is what these four are going to do before they leave, and they won't even look up. I have nothing against you personally, but I'm deeply concerned that you attended one of Darcy's fundraiser events, or whatever it was, that you were a part of her case, whether you did it on your own or not, that you know these four. You didn't mention Redmond Ramos. You don't know him. Yeah, that's true. So how were you contacted? Who contacted you? Which one of these contacted you?
I was approached by somebody who is not up here and asked.
We actually shouldn't, we actually shouldn't discuss that.
I know who it is. You don't have to say anything else. People listening know exactly who it is.
This process is violating Robert's rules.
Of all the lawyers in the state of Colorado, you can't come up with somebody that doesn't know you? You can't find somebody else that's not involved personally with you? This is not an emergency. I know you want to call it an emergency. And you made that clear with your disrespectful comment about the incoming board, who I assure you is excellent. But this is not an emergency. Mike shouldn't have to give up one day of his vacation to hire a lawyer because you are hiring an investigator. Four people are hiring an investigator. Four people for the Town of Monument.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Anyone else within the room like to make a public comment? Ms. Chronic?
For Chronic, Buffalo Valley Pat. To the comment about core issues, I feel compelled to let you all know that this was a very innocent issue, that the people who put together the door hangers and the, and the signs had no intent to commit any kind of a criminal activity. This is the first time they've ever done this. This is the first time we've ever done home rule. Hopefully, we'll never have to do it again. But the issue committee approached this from the standpoint of, we think we know what we're doing. How bad could it be for a door hanger? Okay, that's the core. They didn't ask for somebody, Mike or the attorney, to say, is this okay? They didn't do that. There's the issue, simply put. And it happened once, and it probably will never happen again. And we're spending an inordinate, inordinate amount of time and money to get to the point where you're going to find out that's what happened. Not a whole bunch of procedures, not a whole bunch of processes that were violated. They neglected to ask for approval before these things got printed. Long and short, that's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Dan Showalter Creek Valley Circle. I won't, I won't belabor the financial aspect. I think it's been brought up quite a bit. The decision has already been made to hire an investigator, and personally, I can move on. My question is about the timing. So I'm sorry, you keep getting asked questions, but what is the output of your investigation? Is it a report? I mean, what does that look like? Okay, so the output is a report. And that, and that report isn't going to change whether it, whether we have another special meeting on the twenty-ninth, or you have a private meeting with the town council on the twenty-ninth, or if you turn it in in February fifth, I'm just making up a date. Meaning the outcome would change. I'm saying the outcome of your report would be the same regardless of when you submitted it. Would the depth be, would you, never mind.
This going back and forth is violating Robert's rules.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. My, my point is, is that an investigator's already been hired. The output of that investigation is going to be a report. We're spending a lot of town resources to try to jam it in in a short period of time when the investigator has already said that that would limit his effectiveness in conducting the investigation. My recommendation, not that anyone cares, would be that if we're going to have a special meeting on the twenty-ninth, it'd be better used to do board turnover between the current board and the board that will be sworn in next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any, any hands, Drew? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to close public comment and proceed on to town council comments. Anyone like to go first?
Let me just say, I appreciate everybody's willingness to talk openly about the issue. I think we've been more honest and frank with each other, and the, and the tone has been, you know, very good. It's my hope that this is just a misunderstanding and just a lack of education. But, but that's why, that's why I believe we needed our, the attorney to investigate to find out if our, if our town attorney had been involved and didn't say anything or didn't, you know, wasn't there. I think there are a lot of things we just need to get to the bottom of and verify. And given the fact that there's just a couple of weeks left in this month, this is a preliminary, this will only be a preliminary investigation. And it will be up to the new board to decide whether they want to, whether, from the information they receive, there's more that needs to be looked into, or that may be it. So I just want to thank everybody for their, for coming forth and, and the positive tone that we've had. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, as I think probably most of us know in this room or online, monuments under the magnifying glass from the, the news release from KOAA and showing documents, et cetera, and discussing this particular issue. So that's definitely has been a concern of mine. Another concern of mine, which I think goes along with the situation where the money was paid back the day before the last special meeting, is when the campaign finance reports were first filed for the door hangers and signs, they declared five dollars. That does not make any sense, and that's one of the items that's in the board packet. Doesn't make any sense at all to declare five dollars for when the first finance, financial report was due. It wasn't until I submitted a complaint to the town hall where the revised or amended report came back with the Town of Monument stating twenty-five hundred dollars for the door hangers, any kind donation for the door hangers and the signs. But the date of the purchase, knowing that my complaint, I think, was the end of October, and the response was in November, the actual purchase was in May. So why was that not disclosed a lot earlier? So in looking at the picture, the entire picture of what went on with declaring five dollars for signs and door hangers, that's kind of like a slap in the face. I'm not going to declare, whoever did that, I'm not going to declare the true amount. And then if I hadn't submitted a complaint, I have to wonder if I would have ever seen an amended report with the Town of Monument for twenty-five hundred dollars on it. So that, to me, big time lacks transparency. And that is my concern about if this investigation will truly go forward after January third. Let me see here.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman, again, and Steve from Finance for the, letting me know that over thirty-nine thousand dollars is available in the Home Rule account. Potentially, that particular dollar amount that is needed for this, the town attorney that represents the town, plus Mr. Vanderjat, could potentially, you know, pay without having to take any money out of the town's reserves.
Let me, let me just be clear on that. We've already taken that money. As you know, we've done next year's budget, and you've approved next year's budget. That money was reserved for next year's budget. So now we will have to take that back and spend that money. If it's done this year, we'll have to spend that money this year and restate next year's budget.
Okay. I would like to also thank Mr. Brunk, who's no longer here, for the apology to Ms. Stevens, via Mr. Stevens, Councilman Stevens. I thought that was very thoughtful and much needed. And, let's see, just looking at my notes, sorry. I think that that's it. We appreciate your comments, and that's the only comments that I have to say.
I just had one more, and that was, we mentioned it the last meeting, but the clarity between two F and now was, any promotional materials for two F was fundraised through the Chamber of Commerce and not paid by the Town of Monument.
Any other board, council comments?
I have one more question. We had to, staff had to really rush yesterday. We were told about ten-thirty in the morning or nine-thirty in the morning that there was a possibility of having a special meeting. And so a lot of our staff was off yesterday. As I've stated before, and we had to bring people in, people had to work from remote to be able to make this happen. That's when mistakes get made, okay? We make mistakes. I made a mistake. I did, I forgot to call the police chief and say, have a police officer here for tonight. I had to, I remembered that this afternoon, and we have a police officer here because I remembered that and got one here. I'm just asking, please, if you want to have more meetings between now and December thirtieth, please give us more than twenty-four hours' notice.
Thank you. Your quest is understood. Okay. Any other council comments?
I'll move to adjourn.
We have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.